I would like to call the meeting to order and if everyone could stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone and thank everyone for coming this evening. The first thing we need to do is to approve the meeting agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. 5.0 is community comments. Community comments is an opportunity for the public to address a school board on a school-related item in accordance with the guidelines that are printed at the end of the agenda. And agendas can be found on the table over there. And I've got a couple people for community comments. Sue Hennessy, Grand Marie Playhouse.
We need to do this together because we're...
Okay, and it's...
Is that okay with you?
Carrie...
Math.
Math?
Like math with an N.
Okay.
I just want to share with you, Carrie Nath is now the co-director of the Grand Marie Playhouse with me. We hired her in July and part of the strategic planning and succession planning is how we go forward. And so what I'm handing out to today is the Grand Marie Playhouse strategic plan of our education plan. I'll let Carrie talk about it more because it's kind of her thing. But I just want to say, we just met with teachers after school to kind of talk about how we can work with them for the school. And Seven came and we had a great conversation about moving forward, about what we can do with the school. So this is Carrie.
Hi, everybody. It's so nice to meet you all and thank you so much for taking some time to hear us this evening. Just sat down and had a great conversation with Chad while we were ready for the meeting to start because there were multiple meetings happening after school. What we're looking at is, as you know, the shows are, we do the two shows every year and those are phenomenal opportunities and the students get a wealth of not only onstage acting experience, but also the technical skill set as well because Sue's coming from such a strong technical background. So we want to take those shows and build off of that into what we can bring into classrooms and residencies throughout the year. After-school classes for students who are interested in working even further as well as for adults. And then also really looking at our STEM to STEAM initiative. So how can we take these technical skills and be able to utilize them in science classes, in math classes, and for that science, technology, engineering, and math component? So one of the things we just talked about back here is Chad said, you know, I do a lot of sound work in my physics class. We could bring Doug Livsey up, who's our sound designer that comes up from the Walker Museum, and bring him into those classrooms to be able to work on sound design, different sound technical equipment. And so the goal is to really take what we do and fold it into what's already happening in the classroom and be able to be there as more support for that curriculum that already exists. As you know, you have great teachers here. We're not coming in to say, this is the way to be creative. We're coming in to say, let us be part of your creative team and use us as a tool for another, as another way to approach your students in what you're doing. So this really spells out all the different education programming that we'll be building over the next two years. But this year, and what we were talking with the teachers this afternoon about, is how can we begin to do those in-school classes? What are the best days? What are the best blocks of time? What are they looking at in their curriculum? Tell us what you're doing in your classroom so we can incorporate the theater and technical skill sets into that aspect of learning. So a couple of the things that came out in that, one, obviously, literature connection and storytelling, but was taking the technical, for instance, do you want to talk just a little bit about laying out the set and being able to utilize that as part of the...
Well, what I do as a set designer, I do a half-inch scale on my computer and I figure out all the details on my floor plan and stuff. And then, because it's a shared space, I can't always build the set at the beginning of rehearsal. So I tape it out on the floor. So it goes from a half-inch scale to full scale, right? And what we learned is that hits three math standards in sixth grade math. So it's like, what if I brought a class in and they actually figured out how to tape out my floor plan on the stage and they would have fun with it and it's actually getting them up out of their chairs and they're actually learning things. Everything I do technically has a math component or a science component. Lighting is physics. Talking with Mila, the difference between paint color and light color and what your braid does to adjust for those things. And we can really bring those sciences alive by actually bringing them into the theater and having them work with us. And then the teachers just sort of go ching, ching, ching at night. And that standard, that standard, that standard. And oh, look, the kids didn't even know they'd just learned some algebra, you know?
So along that line, too, it might be through the technical aspect, technical aspect, or Little Mermaid is our first show. And of course, we have land creatures and we have sea creatures. So how do we explore the ecosystem and utilize the story that we're already putting on the stage so that they can be working on it in their classrooms and then bring that work in and incorporate that into the set and into the story? So this year is really about kicking off this integration of theater and technical work into the curriculum existing in the classroom and be there as support for the teachers and just continue to build on those residencies so that eventually, really, the best-case scenario, and the teachers were saying this too, if we start now in the first grade and those students, by the time they're in eighth grade, have consistently been utilizing those theater skills, they can turn around and start teaching the first, second, and third graders and we build an in-house apprenticeship program. So it's taking what you know and what's the better, greatest assessment is to be able to teach it to someone else and say, this is how I know what I know and now I can teach that to you as well. So really looking at it from a holistic standpoint and super excited to be here. And it was so great to have the teachers come in already with so many ideas and looking forward to integrating throughout the year. So, thank you so much.
I just want to say, one more thing before I quit is we have our information on the back, our emails on the back. Because when I was at the last meeting in June, I can't speak back and we were talking about the lease and stuff. There were some questions and information. I just want to really open ourselves up to, if you have any questions ever about what we do or how we do it, I'll continue to come in and talk and tell you what we're doing. But if we're available through email, through meetings, whatever, so if you have questions, please feel welcome to ask us anything you have about the Playhouse and what we do.
Great, thank you so much.
6.0 is student highlights. 6.1 National Merit Scholar semifinalists, Robin Henderson and Adam Dorr.
All right, so we had two students that we nominated for the National Merit Scholarship and they were recognized last spring and they have actually made it to the nationals. So that is Robin Henderson and Adam Dorr. So we wish them good luck. And then also, the first cross-country meet, the girls won the meet, so they ranked first.
Thank you. 7.0 is to approve the consent agenda. Is there anything from the consent agenda that we would like to pull for discussion? If not, I need a motion to approve.
I'd like to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. 8.0, discussion action items. 8.1, goals report.
So we have our open house that went quite well. And then we also have PBIS, which is Positive Behavioral Intervention System. Ooh, I gotta write that. Which addresses really somewhat in the middle school, but primarily in our elementary school. If you remember Viking Way. And so they're just re-establishing those and getting that focused in for the year in our classrooms. Looking at academic achievement piece, we're just getting started. The QCOM group is looking at setting their goals for the year. Let's bring this on that. Student schedules have been adjusted as needed. If you know, Chad came and said, oh geez, you know, hey, is there any way I can get into this class? Or at the high school level, those things have been adjusted so that their needs are met. That's needed. And then they're also doing the assessments at this time. All the kindergarteners get assessed, actually, all our elementars get assessed through NWEA. With that assessment, our maths test that we heard. And so our students are being assessed math and reading so we can kind of see where they're starting at so we can navigate through it at the end of the school year. And so that's what's taking place with our students right now. And then Lori's been quite busy as well as Pam is working with the auditors. That took place and I think it's still ongoing. I can't remember every day when I would talk to Lori, she'd, yeah, they sent me another email. They sent me another email. So she's been very busy getting what they need and we have a meeting coming up. So that's what's going on for three goals and then we're going to be discussing those. Reviewing those on the 24th.
Yes. I just noticed that.
Yep.
Can I just say the QCOM group, the Quo...
Quo.
Yeah.
It's really a very smart and talented group of people. I'm enjoying just kind of getting up to speed as they try to figure out their professional development pieces and their goals for the year. And I think there'll be some good integration points, you know, for strategic, our strategic planning and goals. Kind of get better reporting in here to understand what they're doing and do that. So it's a great group.
Yeah, I agree. That's a great group. 8.2 is bond updates.
Not a lot physically happened in our last month, but we did have a final payment there with Cross Anderson on our roof here at the ACA. And so that's, that was a big payment out, but that was kind of that final closeout payment. So that took place. A couple of other items, if you see in their bills, we had dumpster and supplies for some of the projects that Mr. Nelson and Hitchcock were operating. Otherwise, not a lot of activity on the bond side. Taking course of the new down the app at the end of the year.
And just, September 26th is our...
Oh, sorry, I have the wrong date.
Board session. I just want, thank you, Pam.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, it's the 26th. All right, sorry. Any questions about the bond? All right, 8.3 to approve the expenditure revenue reports, FY 2019, year-end, and FY 20, August 2019.
We're still pretty new into the year. The first checks have gone out. I don't know if they're, they're not even reflected yet. The big checks, they should group the checks for the...
Payroll and stuff?
For payroll.
They're not in there yet because that's just through August.
Yeah, this is through August, so. Yeah, so just start seeing our budgets. You know, as you can see, the percentage of what's remaining is still pretty high. It's all because we're still figuring out the year.
Lori, did you want to speak about the year-end, 2019 year-end?
No, I mean, the auditors still making a few little adjustments. And then, but for the most part, I think we had all the bills paid that go with last year. There's, it still showed some encumbered stuff that it will slowly close out as they get closed or cashed. Or like, we have a couple of open POs that I don't think we either didn't use PO and we paid bill or something or they didn't get ordered. So we'll be closing those out so those ones will kind of clear out of there and we'll be... So it gets a good shape.
Yeah, okay. I would say in looking at it, it looks good. So, okay. Hope that there's not a lot from the auditors as far as justice goes.
He only had to make three changes so far. I was like...
Great.
I'm like, crashing my fingers and hope we're done?
Great. All right, motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the expenditure revenue report.
I'll second it.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. 8.4 to approve the Teamsters General Local Union number 346 contract, which consists of historians plus drivers, cooks, and administrative assistants. Just so the public is aware, there is a copy on the table over there.
I make a motion to approve the Teamsters General Local Union number 346 contract.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. 8.5 to approve the Teamsters General Local Union number 346 contract, and this is paraprofessionals. And again, there's a copy of that on the table over there also.
I'll make a motion to approve the Teamsters General Local Union number 346 contract. I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion?
I do have one question. Dr. Crandall, you had emailed to say that there was some sort of a language change about... I didn't print that page out since last week, about...
Oh, yes, that was about the, we're going to do a memorandum of understanding. So that was about the accrual for vacation.
And so what is the benefit of having the language? I mean, both the language and both contracts is now the same.
Just to make it nice and clear so there's no misinterpretation.
Oh, so one is just more concise than the other, okay.
Yes.
Mild impression.
Yeah.
Mild.
Probably make some changes in some other contracts that had similar language to make it nice and clear for all contracts so we don't have any misinterpretation on either side.
Hey, you fixed one thing I brought up to you, right? 123 days?
123 years, I think.
Years?
Verify that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. 8.6 to approve the Northland Learning Center contract, which is in our packet.
This is for physical therapy assistance services. We're starting the year under this contract that did verify. We did hire someone this year that actually is a physical therapy assistant. We just want to get the year started and verify that we're going to be able to utilize that person in this role. And if we can do that, we'd much rather have Ellen Peron taking care of these duties. And so we just wanted to get the year started first and then Ms. Myers will be kind of doing the tracking on that, verify that we're going to be able to make that move. And this individual who's under this contract may talk to Northland that we're going to be able to then discontinue this.
Sometimes it's not a bad idea to just have an open-ended contract with somebody that, you know, in case you find yourself at the vacancy, you already have that in place. I don't know if that, this can beat that, but just in case.
Yeah, and it wasn't exit notification.
They need this person elsewhere.
Okay.
In the Northland Learning Center jurisdiction as well, so.
Great.
Move to approve the Northland Learning Center contract.
I'll second it.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. All right, 8.7 is to set our time and location of the truth and taxation meeting. And this happens in December. And so we'll just set it as 12:12. That is our meeting, our December meeting. It's not the third. We have it early in December just because holidays and that. So we can't start that truth and taxation meeting until 6:00 PM. So we'll start our meeting normally at 5:00. And at 6:00 PM, wherever, wherever we're at, we'll pause and then we'll go into the truth and taxation meeting and Dr. Crandall and Laura Lori will have a presentation for the public at that time. So it'll just be part of our December meeting. But we have to officially set that and advertise that. So it's 12:12 at 6:00 PM here on the Janus. Okay.
Got it.
All right. All right.
Forget the good.
All right, 8.8 to approve the maximum levy amount.
Motion second.
Discuss.
Make a motion to approve the maximum levy.
I'll second it.
So board, we, this is a typical scenario. We always ask the board, when I say we, I miss backing myself, for the levy. We ask for the maximum because you can always under-levy. But if we under-leveyed right now, we can't reverse that. So at our 12:12 meeting, that's when the board actually does the levy setting. And so in that time period, if at some point, you know, information comes up and it makes sense for the board to under-levy in one of our different categories, then we would make that decision at the 12:12. But at this point, if we do the maximum, we less, as I said, we can always take off, we can never add back.
What is the maximum?
The maximum, when you ask that specifically, if you're asking the percent increase or any impact...
When you say approve the maximum levy...
So in each, each of the different categories, they have their max amount. So we ask for that to take place. I'm going to turn it, that's probably inaccurate. I'm going to miss back.
Lori's going to crash.
It's actually, he's right. But what's happening right now... What's happening right now through December, Minnesota Department of Ed is running adjustments. They're running numbers. I'm going through those numbers. I call them up and say, hey, this number looks wrong. What's going on? So there's all these numbers being changed right now. Student counts, I looked at our student counts and they were kind of overinflated just because we were following the trend where that trend looked like it leveled off. So we worked on adjusting some student counts and stuff. So I think the latest run had less than a percent and that may still change it based on what MDE is doing on their end, so.
A lot of our levies is, Lori was mentioning, are associated with our student count. It's actually last year's October 1st number, correct?
And, and future.
In future.
Some things are running adjustments for last year's kids and in the...
And some are actually going to the future. So we, as a school district really, I mean, Lori is looking at those trends and based off of our trend, and if we knew, knew something. Say, for example, we knew a business that has a fair amount of employees, which also are families, are, it's going to close down. We knew that was going to happen this year, therefore, you know, we may be losing 10 children. We're going to lower that. The other piece is, we have our census data, so we know how large the kindergarten class is coming in, for example. Based off of that. And we know obviously how many students are leaving from graduation. You know, if that's, hopefully, for the most part, you know, five in, five out. That's how we base our predictions and some of the levy components are based off of that.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Other questions or the discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. 9.0 personnel. 9.1 to approve the hire of CNA teacher Mark Abrahamson.
I'll make a motion to approve the hire of CNA teacher Mark Abrahamson.
I'll second.
Discussion?
If you recall, he retired. He had to have a certain separation time before he then reapply. He reapply and so we hired Mark back, fully qualified as we are now. Great to have him back.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. 9.2 to approve the hire of paraprofessional Hannah Zarewski. Kind of a...
Z.
Is it pretty cool?
No, it's a Z.
Okay.
Oh, it's a Z. Sorry, it's supposed to be a Z.
It's a Z, not a N.
Oh, a first, a Z.
A Z, right?
First letter is Z.
Yeah, it has a N.
She's two Cs in.
Oh, well, that's...
Okay. Zachareski?
Yeah, Zacherski, I think.
Okay.
We apologize.
Sorry.
I'll make a statement.
All right.
It's a Z.
Second.
She'll be working paraprofessional and she'll be in the elementary.
And we do have those listed, 9.2 and 9.5, we have that information in our packet. Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. 9.3 to approve the hire of paraprofessional Tiffany Feistrom.
Make a motion to approve the hire of Tiffany Feistrom.
Second.
Any discussion?
She'd see she'll be pre-K assistant, paraprofessional.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. 9.4 to approve the paraprofessional Casey Eversen.
Make a motion to approve Casey Eversen as paraprofessional, the hire, Carrie Eversen. As paraprofessional, sorry.
I'll second.
It's been a long day. Hire Casey Eversen.
I'll second that.
I got it.
Second of all, Carrie, Carrie second. Yeah, we're shaking second. I'm super excited. Uh, discussion.
Middle school, high school, and special education area as a paraprofessional.
I just presume, this is part of random discussion, that because only one of these people has experience listed, that they're all not particularly experienced paraprofessionals, right?
Correct, yep, that was given.
Otherwise, it would have been... Yep.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. 9.5 to approve the hire of paraprofessional Sarah Wacowski.
I'll make a motion to hire Sarah Wacowski as a paraprofessional. We did that really well, so I'm going to second.
Why thank you.
All right, discussion.
You'd see she's our, in the behavioral assist program, still working with our students who need some coping skills. So that's what, she'll be working with our kids there.
Elementary to high school?
Yep, the whole gamut.
And so how will she be working with them?
I'm sorry? Working on coping skills and such, a teacher recommendation through our student support team, recommendations through there.
With their reading, math?
What did Abby stamp for?
She's working on behavior.
Just the behavior?
She's on the behavior. We also have staff for math, it sounds like.
Okay, yes.
As is alternative delivery systems.
Specialized instructional services.
Thank you. Thank you, Google. This is tough.
Alternative delivery and specialized instructional services.
Well, it is, it's a program designed to work with our kids so that they do not go in special education. Try to catch them, build their skills up, catch them early.
Well, you know, actually, one of the most common questions I get asked about my school board role of people that watch the video is, can you ask? There's not very many, but there are some that are like, oh, I watched the video, this or that. Is what is, what do all the acronyms mean?
Yeah.
So sometimes I, it's not that I don't know it, it's that I feel like people ask me, can you be sure that the meeting is understandable for the viewing public?
Yeah, so she's going to be working with those kids. And we do have an assist position, like I mentioned, for math and reading, so for the elementary areas as well.
Great. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. 10.0 administrative reports. 10.1 principals report highlight item.
All right. I just want to go over a few things. First of all, what Dr. Crandall was talking about, our PBIS. We've also implemented some class meetings and an elementary assembly where we are going through our expectations with the kids and having rich conversations. Mr. Dorr has met with every class at least one... Mr. Dorr has met with every class at least once so far and is on a continuing rotation throughout the middle school, high school. Um, we can talk about any hot topics or some ideas that students bring forward to us. So it has been, um, very positive, in my opinion. The next one is going to be on Monday for the elementary. And at that time, we are going to talk about student of the month for our elementary students, so each class will have a student of the month. And then, in our PLCs last week, or yesterday actually, um, our hot topic of the PLC was to talk about student of the month for middle school and high school. So everybody got to send those in with a little snippet, and then if you go right by the office, you'll see that there is two big boards that have pictures for a, or for two peo- two, two students. And one will be for middle school, one will be for eleme- or, one will be for high school. The elementary will be recognized at the assemblies, so that they will get recognized in front of their classes and all of the elementary, and then, uh, they will get a certificate that goes along with that. So I'm excited for that piece of it. Um, the other thing, you know, with the beginning of the year, we see some of our little glitches that, which includes a fire alarm, where we had some instruments in the hallway, and anytime that we see a glitch, we fix it. And so, um, I appreciate all the people that have come and talked to us about that. We have streamlined our delivery system of students after school. After the buses, they then go to the playground if they're getting picked up. If they go to All Stars, they go on one side of the playground. The elementary students that are getting picked up by parents are on the other side of the playground. Um, so it's very much streamlined, but if we don't know those glitches are there, somebody needs to inform us so that we can fix them. Um, I think that is about it, did you wanna add anything?
Uh, I just wanted to, we have the, uh, app kind of up and running, and I wanted to make sure to recognize Pam. And Pam's kind of taken the total lead on that and put in hours and hours with that. And Jill Bowen has helped her, and I thought I'd be helping them, but that actually hasn't been the case so far. So those two have, um, done the bulk of the work. And, you know, it's a learning process, 'cause whenever you do something like this the first time, right? It's, you can make this thing as endless as possible. And so, just, they've just put in hours and hours of, hey, th- this button isn't here, that button isn't here. Pam's come down and said, how do we wanna do the athletics portion, or where do we wanna put this? And so, just know that you'll, you might get feedback from time to time, this is tough to navigate. That would be good feedback for you to give me. That would be like, if, if you're getting feedback, we would like the feedback, because then we can fix some issues that sometimes we, we don't see on our end when we're doing it. And so, I'm encouraging parents that I meet, are there things that are bulky here and stuff like that? So know that we will continue to improve it, and right now, we're kind of in phase one and, uh, um, you know, so far, so good.
Do you guys all have it on your devices? Yeah. It's really nice, I mean, I'm really impressed with it. I don't think it's hard to use.
Well, that would be 'cause of Pam.
Um, question please, um, and how have we advertised this to the general public who is interested? I, I haven't, I haven't heard it on the radio, but that might be.
I think Pam has the most, uh.
I did talk about it on the radio one time, but I'll, I'll be sure that I, um, mention it again there.
And then we passed out, um, at the house, we passed out, we had flyers for everybody that said where to go, we'd download directions for them to do it.
And we have it in game programs now, so the parents can come in and see the game program.
And it'll be on our Viking voice, we're trying to ma- make sure that, you know, we're taking that picture that pops up first when you first open the app and that people start recognizing that. So when they do go into the app store, it's there for them to, it actually is really easy to find on the app store. Yep, and it's tweets and Facebook, all of that, and then, so all that stuff is tied to our website. It's like on the news feed and the live feed, and I keep saying, remember, download our new app, so, yeah.
We also had a Viking panel on Wed- Tuesday night. And I wish it was better attended, but it was powerful. I had some emails come in to me on Wednesday morning about how good it is to educate the general public and parents. Um, so we're gonna be looking at how we can continue to educate, because there's a lot of unknowns that come along with AP. But, um, I will give kudos to Mr. Dorr, he was on the panel, and he definitely spoke from his heart, and he spoke the truth, and he did a very good job of representing our school there.
Hey, some pictures on the live.
And videos. Are those videos that you uploaded, or is that the entirety of it?
Yep. It is, it's in three sections, just 'cause it's easier to upload at that point, but it is the whole presentation.
Um, so with the start of the year, I'm wondering, um, where, when we can expect to have a student rep for that process should be starting? And we, so the application, it was an application and an interview?
Yep.
And so, have you done the applications?
We have not.
Okay.
Ms. Rebelski has just got her applications for the student government that sell themselves.
Okay.
So I met with Ms. Rebelski, I said, could we expect a student rep to be ready for the October meeting? And she thinks yes. So they're going to solidify members, maybe, maybe it was today, when I was out today, so, maybe it was today or tomorrow. And then we are going to have applications open for somebody who wants to be, um, on the school board, and then we'll start that process. So the goal is for a young person to be here on the next meeting.
Well, and we actually, the plan is to have them start in January, when a new member would start.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
And so, as part of your interview process, of one, a board member also wanted to be part of that.
Okay.
And so, um, so why don't you let us know when that's going to be, obviously, it will be during the day, obviously, with the student. So, um, put that out, and then we can, it's basically whoever says aye first, raises their hand first, gets to be part of that. And, um, yeah, so that would be great, but yeah, our plan was to have them seated at that January meeting.
And that might be, that might be better just logistically, um.
Well, that's when we do our, we start everything and, you know, reshuffle the deck of who's doing what, and so January's intense.
I feel like we also oftentimes have our new person is sitting here in the summer meeting, so I'm not sure. I feel like we've had that meeting.
A new board member?
Yeah.
Um, it, it's their choice. I mean, some people have come, some people haven't. It depends on the, it depends on the person taking over, but it's all, it's gonna be all of us again in January, so.
Well, but I was just meaning for the student to come and observe a meeting before they.
If they, if we have.
If they, if they want to, they should have come and observed the summer meeting.
Yeah. Well, and it might be a good time, then when we would have, one of us, uh, would have chance to maybe meet with that person, that student, if they had some questions and, um, things, we could go over the basics of what a meeting looks like and the time it takes to start, so. Great. Any other questions for our principals?
Yes.
Yes.
This is about fees, about not athletic fees, but maybe this is more for Dr. Campbell, for the art fees and the, um, industrial art tech fees, um, to, not just to Laurie, how many, how many kids, uh, and I don't expect you to know this, like, wait, no, but how many kids participate in classes that require a classroom fee? And then, how many are on, um, how many then, uh, are on a scholarship, or how many? I'm just looking for some data.
We can collect the data, we have, uh, I could be, I could be wrong, but I can give you a ballpark right now, and then we could collect the data. You got a, a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade art, and then you've got, um, middle school industrial arts. You got a kind of a nice handy sheet, here's the fee, like ten bucks or whatever it is. And then there's simply, the student can fill in their name, and then they can simply check a box, and if they've checked the box, it means I need a scholarship, and then they turn it in, it's very anonymous. Um, but we can do the, I, I can try to track that down and what that is.
We don't wanna have that shared with the public, because all of a sudden, if you get
Yeah, something like twenty-five bucks, yeah.
Class A, oh.
Oh, and I was just looking for, what, what is, like, the number of how many kids participate in the classes that, that require a additional fee to take the class. I'm not looking for it broken out necessarily by class, classes at all, not at all.
To go with that, we might, um, in the months ahead, just come and discuss a little bit about the AP testing. Um, the AP, associated with the fee.
Oh.
The AP classes, you know, the organization, the AP organization, you know, they want those fees earlier and earlier, so they can plan for testing dates, the right test, the amount of tests going out to all the school earlier and earlier. So this year, our teachers have to know who's taking those tests already by September twenty-fifth. I mean, that's as early as it's ever been, and so you're asking parents to pay for the tests. And what we don't wanna do is place, hopefully this comes across right, but you don't wanna place undue pressure on teachers to test kids who don't necessarily need to be tested. So, an AP kid might take a test, and at the end of the session might say, you know, I'm not taking the test, I don't feel ready. And that's their right to do that, as, you know, they don't have to take the test unless the teacher set that in their class stipulation that you will take the test otherwise, you know. So, we don't want it to look like, you know, either kids are dodging tests or not, it's just that's kind of part of the, part of the gig, and not everybody takes the test, and then how many we have for free and reduced. So we're going through that right now, we'll sit down with the AP instructors, we'll say what works, what doesn't. It puts the teachers kind of in a tough spot when you gotta collect this early in the year, so we'll be kind of working forward.
How much is it?
Most tests are ninety to a hundred and twenty-five dollars. We ask a kid to pay forty dollars, I believe, free and reduced, pay ten. There's a family max of two hundred, and I believe the individual max is one fifty or one twenty-five, I don't know, we have it on a sheet.
I guess theoretically, a student could be taking a lot of AP courses.
My senior's taken five of the tests, and then, you know, I have a sophomore, you know, so yeah, a kid could take five, six tests conceivably.
Could the district just front the money on the fee, and then not even really bring it up with the students until?
We're, we're fronting all the rest of the.
Well, I know, but just upfront, cover all of it, and then, rather than being in a situation where you say, okay, you gotta decide if you can take this test right now or not, like, pony up the dough. You know, if, because it keeps getting earlier and earlier and earlier, I mean, there's the risk of you paying for a test that doesn't end up getting taken, but, I mean, that risk sort of exists in either case, right?
But if you don't really ask the students upfront, there might be students upfront who are like, I'm, I'm taking the course, I just, from the higher level classwork, but I have no interest in taking the test, and that's just not something I wanna do, and there's no reason to pay for it.
Sure, I mean, yeah, maybe there's some people like that, but that's, my, my sense is that most kids are going into it thinking, I gotta take the test. Right?
Yeah.
Cause there's a doubt that they want to probably get college credit.
I'm saying, yeah. Well, cause you get college, you potentially can get college credit for it and save thousands of dollars.
Right. Right, right, exactly.
Cool.
That was just an idea, you know, just to like.
You're probably talking about.
And then you could still pay, they can still pay for it later, and you sort of recoup the cost that you would've anyways. It's just to help alleviate that problem, you give them a short-term loan, basically, you know? And don't have the conversation until a little bit later in the year, before worrying about that stress.
Yeah, I think we can get a happy medium somewhere. We are talking probably, though, you, you probably are, just rough math, talking fourteen to seventeen thousand dollars probably for the tests.
Okay.
That's my guess, yeah.
And, and so we had this discussion before, and part of it was brought up because one year, I don't remember the dollar, no, but it was thousands of dollars that ended up, of the ta- tests that were never taken, and so.
Here?
Here. And as a district, we just, you know, you eat that, so, just because, you know, 'cause students decided not to take the test. So I understand Mitch's point on this, um, you know, they've got skin in the game and things, but I agree, it's a lot earlier. I feel like last year was like April or something, or that, that decision had to be made, it was way, I thought it was later anyways. So I don't know.
I mean, is there a way, any way to like push back against that with the organization?
I have tried that a little, um.
Cause it seems unreasonable, like, oh, we need more time.
I've actually, I've actually, there's actually alternative late testing dates. And so we go every other day, and so it hurts our kids to take on the national test day, because they're actually shh. Maybe not getting ten class sessions, would that be fair to say, ten to fifteen? And so you want your kids to get all that time, right, because you got it, I mean, you should see his class, how much stuff there's in there. Our kids have taken it early, so I asked the organization, can we just, all of our, our whole school wants the late testing day. And we, that's, we can't do that. So I've, I've got some roadblocks there, so, so on both accounts, I have pushed back.
Yeah.
As aggressively as you kind of can, and then, then you gotta decide, well, they're a national, it's a national, it's not a state thing, so, um, you just, you kind of go with the rules you've been, so. I will explore maybe a hybrid of what you're saying of our fees and, and some of the upfront stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a great thing that students can, it's a huge investment that people can make, offsetting the cost of college and getting engaged with that second step, so, yeah. I think as creative as we can get to help promote that and keep it strong, I think it's a good thing to do, so.
Any other questions for our principals? Thank you both. Yes.
How's it doing with having, um, the kids leave the caf- leaving the cafeteria at lunch, are they running wild? Or they just, is there, is there, uh?
They both have smiles on their faces.
Define wild. To be honest with you, lots and lots of positive compliments from parents and kids. That is not to say a kid has never gone into the nurse's office, 'cause a ball hit them in the head. But overall, I would say that the kids are very happy with it. Um, we presented it to them and said, you know, if you're gonna fight us in certain things, we're not gonna do it. The kids have been fantastic. Andy Fedema has done a great job making sure that the gym is properly cared for. I'd say overall, the start of the year has been very good.
And is there any sort of, uh, observable difference in that first class period after gym, or maybe the last class, or, or after lunch, or the last period of the day where they're more alert, or they're less antsy, or? Is there anything, or is it just?
Just a chat and Julie.
I don't know if we've gotten that kind of feedback, but I would say this, I'd say since I've been here, this is the best feel in the hallways I've ever had. I just really am impressed with this student body, I think the kids have been amazing. Um, the teachers have been really good about being consistent with policy. We don't have kids in the hallways as much. I mean, I just have a really good feel in the building, it feels really good. Well, about third hour after, I, I, I really can't answer that question, I'd be, I'd be totally bluffing my answer. So I'll say, yeah, it's fantastic, but I, I don't know yet, we, we really haven't got that much feedback.
But I'm really, I'm really thankful that our kids are not imprisoned in the cafeteria for that entire time, that they're allowed to run free for six and a half minutes. Oh, no, they're free though. They're on shackles for six and a half minutes, oh gosh.
There's a different feel in cafeteria as well, um, 'cause we have some students, like, we have younger kids coming in at the end and the beginning of the lunches. Um, and that was a big concern for teachers, for parents, that being with those older kids, um, may cause some anxiety for the kids, 'cause it gets a little bit intimidating when there's big high schoolers with preschoolers. Uh, the high schoolers have been pretty responsible and respectful of those little people, and when they leave and the other kids come in, it's quieter, it's, um, more maintained by the teachers. We just gotta get them to make sure that they're cleaning up after that, so that's the only thing that I've heard complaints about for the elementary kids. So I think it's a very positive change.
So the next step is to work on an outdoor.
I just would like to point out that middle schoolers and high schoolers don't wear hats and it's their snow pants, just saying.
It's not my issue, it's not my issue.
I'm saying, to let them outside when it's twenty below, I'm just saying.
They might still wear hats.
Alright, is there anything else, otherwise I'm gonna let our principals off the hook to go watch possibly their kid play something.
Before they leave, I wanna say thank you for your hard work.
Yeah, thanks.
Starting out the school year.
Thank you.
It's been great.
Yeah. Alright, ten point two superintendent report.
Well, kids are right in the buildings, as we all know. Uh, Mr. Nelson organized a great start for our bus service, uh, making sure everybody knew when their kids were gonna get picked up, where and such, and I got that off going, made sure all the bus drivers are trained, so that's looking good, and right now, he's busy getting our buses ready, the inspection time's coming. Next week.
Probably Friday.
Yeah, there's a Friday, so, um, continue with our negotiations, uh, talk. Continue with our negotiations, talked about open house already, and the auditors. Attended this week, meeting that's not on their, MSBA have their tour meeting. So if there are items that any of you board members see as issues that would be something in legislation that you're concerned about, let me know, there's a form that we can fill out, the possible resolution for MSBA to then take over.
I have a question, a clarification. It's my understanding that the state of Minnesota has put up funding, so three and four-year-olds can have free preschool, is that accurate?
Four-year-olds.
Four-year, just the four-year.
We have that, that's the voluntary preschool.
Now, is that available to all school districts in the state of Minnesota?
There is not.
What's the criteria for being eligible?
You were selected a few years back because you applied.
And we were lucky, we applied and we got it.
That was actually just to give credit, Beth Schwartz called me and said, hey, you want me to put in our application? I said, oh, yeah. And so she wrote her application back, that's like four years ago, we got there. And so I'm sure Lori was part of that, I don't know if you were part of that or not, there's a lot of data out there.
Yeah, the, the key to that question, though, is we're not funded for all day, they only fund it for a partial day.
Well, I just happened to have heard a story about, this is from, of course, my daughter, who's a new kindergarten teacher, twenty-two kids in her class, no help at all, all day long, and she has one child that turned five the day before kindergarten started, and she has one child that can hardly be understood when she speaks, because no one has ever spoken to her in her life. So anyway, but they do not have. I mean, she can tell a real difference between those that attended preschool and those that have not, I mean, that is the point. And so I
There's a lot of data out there to support exactly what you're saying.
Oh, boy, are we lucky.
Yeah, we're very lucky.
I also know, just because I'm a preschool parent who has been in communication with Megan Myers about preschool, that she is working on trying to find additional funding to help supplement, because it's the half-day portion that's covering her full day.
Yeah.
So she has been working on additional grant funding and trying to find ways to further assist preschool families.
And so do we, do we have any preschool families that want to be having their kids, I mean, do we have?
We haven't turned anybody over. Yeah, we actually opened up a second section, and that was, then we were able to meet everybody's needs. Yeah, Pam's been, Pam's been, knows it.
You're sounding kinder.
And Megan has really been working hard to, like, I was with the late applying preschool families, and she was asked very clearly, do you want a full day, do you want half-day, what do you want, and how can we provide that for you? She's really been doing her best to bend over backwards and meet the needs of each family.
New division.
Whether they didn't make it, and, 'cause there was the full
Correct.
day section that was full really quickly, and so she's been working very hard and diligently trying to meet everyone's needs. Hat on her back, she missed it, no?
She can watch the video.
She, maybe she'll watch the video.
Anything else you'd like to say?
Is there, is there a long one?
Okay. Any questions, other, other questions for Dr. Grantle?
Yeah, so do we continue to get preschool funding, just?
That's actually a proposal out there to maintain preschool funding, that was brought up in this last legislative session, but it was tabled, and so it'll be coming back up, actually, that was one of the items we talked about at the MSBA. I put that as one of our hyperareas.
It is. Mitch, I need to talk to you later.
You're in trouble, bitch.
Anything else for Dr. Grantle?
I don't have any. He's, he's under our thumb.
So he's in trouble.
No, he's not.
Someone's gotta be in trouble, I'm kidding.
All right, well, that is the end of our agenda, so if anybody has anything else, after we adjourn here, we'll just, let's just do a quick little conversation about next Thursday, about our work session, so.
Twenty-sixth.
On the twenty-sixth.
My, my report is the twenty-fourth, so it is the twenty-sixth.
Right here.
Dan's correct.
Here.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
So if somebody would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting at five fifty-five?
I don't motion to adjourn. I will second that.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, please say name.
Aye.
Motion carries, we're adjourned, thanks, everybody.